All right, we're going to open up our July 9th workshop meeting. Commissioner Gibbons will be here very shortly, so I'm sure he'll be here before we get things rolling. But I added one additional thing to the agenda tonight, or this afternoon, and I'd like to have Phil Scott with Singlerly Fire Company come up. Have a front row seat if you'd like to say a few words, or what you're thinking.
First of all, it's mainly, it's the largest thank you for you guys. We received your check for our assistance from you guys, and it's definitely appreciated, and we're hoping to get into a much closer relationship with the town. Oh, my goodness. Is this thing on?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, but we hope to have a much better relationship. Actually, I even talked to Mary Jo down at the color run, which it was sad that you were not here, because we felt that it would have really had much more color. Would add much more color to it, you know, with that. But, well, white is a shade of color, so. Because it just, she was talking about the baldness of the head and things like that, so it would have really worked out well. But there's a lot of things we'd want to do, and, you know, get more involved with the town, doing more things. I don't want to say it's kind of general or Singlerly Fire Company, but we need to be more community involved, and it starts here with the town. And that's, the only way we can do that is work with you guys as partners. And the money is just a very small part of it, it's so much more that we have to do, and we're looking forward to working with you guys and doing so much more with it. One I'm sort of here asking is, and it would have been a much larger turnout, because we sort of hoped that you guys would call us and say, "Hey, come get your check." Because I had plans to bring like seven fire trucks and, you know, a bunch of people and stuff like that, you know.
We can do that for once.
You know? So, but it's one of the things that we would have liked to, you know, done that and have much more of it. I did use the term talking phony show, but we really want to show you the appreciation of, you know, what you guys do for us, and, you know, how that goes. So in the future, let us know, we'll come and get it. And also, what else can we do for you guys as a fire company? I mean, we, I know, we have our services we provide, we do our stuff, you know, we do little things, I mean, we posed your stage off the other day, and there's little things that we do, you know. We, I spoke with Chief Hill tonight, and John Major's in charge of BMS, we want to do as much as we can to reach out and work with you as best we can, and, you know, there's, there's no job that's too small or too large that we're not willing to look at and work with.
And I think, Phil, we're very appreciative of Singlerly Fire Company, and I'm going to kind of speak, maybe for the group, if the group wants to interrupt me, they certainly can, but, you know, by charter, we give three cents per, hundred dollars or three, you get three cents per.
One point two cents. One point two cents. It used to be three percent of total assessments, but it's essentially only forty percent.
Yes.
Of the value, now they're a hundred percent. That's now one point three percent.
One point three percent of
Of the total assessment.
Of the total assessment value of the town due to the Singlerly Fire Company. And that amount of money is used for, of course, if the town ever had to provide their own fire force, it would probably cost us ten to twenty or thirty times.
I'll give you a rough idea.
Yes.
We have seven, or seven, what's that? We roughly have about seventeen career service staff that we pay mainly through ambulance billing, and that runs around nine hundred thousand a year.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's just for the ambulance, that's for the minimum staff, and it's not hooking equipment, it's not, and that's only two to three people per shift, so you can imagine what your costs would be.
Yes.
Buying fire trucks and ambulance assistance.
You can imagine.
Yeah, so it's.
You can imagine. Now, the one other additional thing that we do, that you may or may not be aware of, the town of Elton, we do donate to order and silver
And that's much appreciated.
To the Singlerly Firehouse. And one of the things that I, I think we have a meter up here, and we're going through a water audit right now, and I just want to let you know, the reason why we're going around, we're trying to identify, in the water audit, where all of our, some of the waters.
Yeah, Mark has spoken with us about that.
Okay, very good. And, and it's not because we're changing things, we just want to try to start to identify with some things.
Because then it's part of your agreement with Arcadia, that you do that, you hit.
No, because of the, because of the permit.
Permit.
Yeah, permit. So we're, we're just, and we're doing that all over, we're actually going to do a physical reading of all meters in town, and reseal the meters, and make sure they're sealed, and, all the way through, but I'm not sure what Singlerly Fire Company could do for us, it's more like, what can we do for you? And it's very appreciative of what you guys do.
And, you know, since I've taken that back February, I mean, whatever issues have contacted you, whether it be, you know, Lou helped us out greatly, we've been in the water pressure fixer station, and everybody getting that done, even to the point of where the chief and I were going to a meeting, and he forgot his tie, and Matt Donnelly hung us a tie.
Oh, very nice.
You know, and it's, it's little things like that that, you know, really make, make a difference when things, when you start talking about working together. And I really want to make sure that, in the future, if we're here for an app, if there's something you need, the chief, myself, you know, one of us will try to make it happen as well possible.
Thank you very much.
So.
Anything for, Phil?
I just, I just mainly thank you.
Congratulations to you for the new presidency there at Singlerly Fire.
Well, ask me next year, we'll see.
All right, great. When you're like this, with this.
I just told him a little way into the air conditioning issue, after ladies kitchen, and said they're trying to cook for bingo, and it's like, trying to get air in there, while they're trying to get it fixed, and so it's
Wow.
All the things that you gotta do, so. But anyway, again, thank you all, I really appreciate everything you all do for us, and, you know, hope to continue working.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Candy Davis from the Elton Gas Company would like to talk about that Elton gas easement.
I would indeed.
And I just want to remind you, the night's not a night that we vote up here, it's for discussion. We try to gain as much information as we can, so that when we have a vote on Wednesday's meeting on July 16th, we're a little bit better prepared, and we're all prepared better to make our, a better decision. So the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and talk to you about this proposed easement. My name is Candy Davis, and I'm operations manager for Elton Gas. Elton Gas is the natural gas distribution system provider in the greater Elton area. We currently service around sixty-five hundred customers, and have been in business for over a hundred and fifty years. Why I'm here for you, before you today, is to discuss with you a proposed easement, which I will send around copies of the plaque. Do you have enough to go around that one? The Hertrick Chrysler Dodge Jeep facility, which is currently under construction along Route 40, just east of the Tractor Supply property, and a little bit west of Delancey Road, is interested in having natural gas for their heat and operations. In order for us to provide the gas, we need to come from our, our facilities currently stopped just west of the Tractor Supply property, and we propose to come across property that's currently owned by the town, that is shown here as the mayor and commissioners of the town at Elton, map 316, which is ordered by South Tartan Drive, the Tractor Supply property, and the Hertrick property. It's currently utilized as a stormwater management property, and there is a, it's approximately six hundred feet long along the southern border, and we're requesting a ten-foot easement, a ten-foot wide easement by a six-hundred-foot easement, which will allow us to get to the Hertrick property. This is the more cost-efficient and, you know, the, the best way for us to provide service to them.
Do we currently supply gas to Tractor Supply?
Yes.
So we, the, now what about behind, to that Buckhill Home Farms neighborhood?
We do have gas on South Tartan Drive, but not throughout, because we, when that development was built, it wasn't built with natural gas in the ground, but we have since provided service to a number of customers there.
Of course, my comment would be, would it benefit you at some point to go the other way also into that South Tartan?
Well, that wouldn't, certainly to get up to Southland Court would be, would be helpful, but at this point, it's, you know, we, we do provide it coming, you know, along South Tartan.
Pretty much everywhere on Route 40 currently has natural gas capabilities?
Not necessarily. Depends which side of the street you're talking about. And, I mean, we do service, you know, the Food Lion Shopping Center, and, you know, the Yodel Bowers, you know, things that are west, but they're coming from behind. We are getting ready to provide service to the Thompson Estate School, which is there. We'll be doing that.
Very nice.
We'll be doing that, hopefully, next month.
Lou, did you see anything wrong with this?
Absolutely, it's terrible.
Oh, there you go. John, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Lou.
Always like to be supportive.
Yeah.
I think that we need to have Hertrick, and that's a, that's a good energy source for them. So I, I think that's a very good relationship with Elton Gas and maintain that easement.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
I just need to fill in a couple things. As far as what?
What?
As far as any legacy cost of repairs or anything, that always falls underneath you.
Yes, to, to our gas main, and if we disturb a property that's on, if, you know, we, when we installed the gas main to go across there, we would return it to the state it was in. And all we're requesting is that it be free of trees, and be maintained, which it is anyway.
So there's, there's, I'm not sure what they asked, Tom. Is there, is there a fee that we charge, or anything like that, since it's one of our property? Have we ever, never done anything like that?
There are easements that, you know, fees that have been charged when, mostly when it's for, you know, if there were operational reasons for Elton Gas, we have, we have paid easements. In this instance, I believe it's beneficial to the town to have a new business, so that would, there are also times that easement fees are not charged.
We, to answer your question, we have a paid easement for a gas transmission line to Marina Park on our property, but that's a transmission line, not a service line that directs to any customer. This is sort of like, just directed to Hertrick, isn't it?
Uh, yes.
For their developments.
Any other questions? All right.
Well, thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you.
We want natural gas through every town, or all through, for every house in this town.
We'll be happy to provide.
All right, very good. Very good. Okay, I'd like to invite up Mr. Jeff Karch with Waste Management to talk a little bit about the grass collection. Come on down.
My folks, sir.
All right. One of the reasons why we invited you here and was that wanted to talk a little bit about our grass clippings in the town of Elton, and I know that the board, three members of the board have kind of been through maybe the discussions about grass clippings, but I knew that Commissioner Van Rena and myself really wasn't, and I'm one of those guys that I never want to see a grass clipping on the streets ever again.
Sure.
And I want to try to encourage grass cycling, or mulching of the grass for every home, but I think you're going to maybe touch base on maybe some thoughts to us.
Yeah, I have a few, we have, I've been speaking with Public Works.
Yeah, give us your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jeff Karch from Waste Management, based out of Wilmington, Delaware. And we're here to talk about the yard clippings and, well, mixed organics as well. And speaking with Public Works, if we've come up a couple of, a couple of ideas, there's several ways that we can, we can get rid of the grass clippings and, and yard waste, small brush, everything like that, so the folks don't have to spend all those hours picking it up, and let us do it, because we're fishing at it. What we can do is, there's a toter, and we can use a sixty-four gallon toter, it's just like the trash toter that you have in your house, just a regular can, connected lid, anything that fits in that, we take. And then also brush, small brush, if it's bundled into four-foot sections and weigh no more than four to five pounds, we'll take them. We'd like to put everything in the can. What's nice about the can, too, is we can put what's called mixed organics, which is food waste, too. You folks pay your MSW waste or your trash waste, you pay for the tonnage, it's a passer from Cecil County. So an average person on a, on a basis of trash, once a week, puts out about seven pounds of food. So if you take that times your four thousand residents, you're taking a lot of weight out of your, out of your trash. I mean, it's a small savings, but it's, it's a nice thing to promote, too. We just implemented that in Middletown, Delaware, it's a good pilot program for us, in this, on this coast, actually. And that, that starts on Friday, actually, so that would be a good pilot, we could, we could show you and see how that works. But as far as yard clippings, yeah, that, that, it's a great thing to do, the grass fits about, just about under an acre into sixty-four gallons. Folks need big, more cans, we provide it for them. Then there's also, we can do bags, so if you want to go away from the cans, you can get the bags, but the problem with the bags is, they get ripped, and they get stuck in the ground, and they still, your grass gets all over, and then you have bags all over the place. And if our guys can't lift it, because grass gets heavy, they can't pick it up.
Is there a specific type of bag?
No, any, any bag's fine, we take it and we remove the bags from it. The bag service is a little more expensive than the totered service, but you, there is an initial cost for the cans, which, you know, we can get into that in more detail. But the recommended way to go would be can service, you know, once a week, and then off-season every other week, or anything like that.
Jeff, do, where do you take the grass clippings in this organic?
Well, we, we take it right now, we take it up to the peninsula in Wilmington, Delaware, so we, we take it, what Mother Nature does, in about two years, we do it about eight weeks, no chemicals, no gas, anything, just oxygen and heat, and Gore Technology puts a cover on these, on these piles of organic, of organic mesh, whatever.
It cooks it?
Yeah, we keep it at a certain temperature, and we inject oxygen and carbon with the wood. Breaks it down, about eight weeks. And what we can turn that into is burned energy pellets. What we usually do is do it with mulch, or mulching, it's almost like a peat moss, it's very fertile and very nice. Hartford County, actually, school district uses it to seed their, feed their fields, soften them up, because you have to have a certain softness to play sports on, so they use that and they do what's called a full cycle. So you can say, hey, we brought it from here, and it came back, and decorate your town with it. But we take it there, and we can also take it to a different facility, if you guys wanted us to, Cecil County has one, and we can take it to.
See, the cost to the town, of course, would be the, the cost to pick the product up. Would there be any dumping costs associated with this?
Well, there's a couple ways we can work that. Right now, you folks, like I said, you pay the passer, which is, you pay the tonnage, and you pay us the service. We can include that into our service, which we get a discounted rate, because we own a percentage of the, the facility. Whereas about, if we just said, gave them ticket, and you folks were to pay the disposal, you'd pay the gate rate, or the retail price. So there's different ways.
Would, and you're, you know, you're going to shoot us a proposal, and we're going to take a look at all this.
Yeah, yeah, this is, yeah.
This is all concept questions here. Would you say it's going to be considerably less in cost than what our normal dump fees would be?
Yeah, it is, it's, the gate rate is, I believe, sixty dollars, where it's close to seventy, sixty-six, sixty-seven at your trash, so it is a, it is a drop in price.
One, one of the things that, this is great information, first of all, and what I wanted to really, if, if we could get to the point where we're mulching our grass, we wouldn't have those additional costs, of course, but I want to ask Dan, if I could get Dan from Public Works to come up here next to you. If you could have, Dan, is there, can you tell me how many tons we're dumping of grass right now?
As of, the program started on April 1st, adds up between now to June 30th, we're looking at two hundred and forty-four tons.
Is that your, all your waste?
That's all your, that's all your, yes.
All your, not just grass. Two hundred and forty tons, and, and how much is that on average per ton to dump?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five dollars a ton.
That, that's just dumping, that's not getting it there, that's not picking it up, that's just, you know.
That's just getting it there.
Correct.
Wow.
Last year, for fiscal year two thousand, for two thousand and thirteen, we had six hundred and eighty-six tons.
So six eighty-six, and you got to figure, that's probably a hundred dollars an hour, or a hundred dollars a ton, once you add in all the costs, what's that come to? At sixty-seven thousand, or six hundred and seventy-eight thousand?
Six eighty-six.
Sixty-eight to seventy thousand dollars in disposal fees of, of grass clippings.
Yes, and the other thing to, to get them with Jeff's idea is, I mean, so far today, since April 7th to the end of the month, you know, June 30th, we spent almost twenty-five hundred man-hours, just paying up, you know, for yard debris. Think about what we can do instead, instead of we can reallocate those sources to other things, you can do a lot more for the town that way, so that's, that's the other thing, that's a direct cost and indirect. And, you know, the things, you know, your waste is a beast, and we listed it before, so, you know, I've had a many, you know, a normal day could be four workers, you have many as eight people out there. And another thing, we're very reactionary, so this is why I'm all hands in for this one time, speaking for Public Works, so, yes.
And, and I guess I had one other question, or I'm sorry. We were, we were taught, it, you know, we have a lot of town homes in our community, and if they want to continue to take their clippings, and those yards are smaller, so of course it would be as, possibly a smaller container or bag. Is there any bulk area that they could, I mean, is there a bulk option?
Well, we, we can get into that, but that, then it gets into people who don't want to do it, and they end up dumping their grass in the, and, and, yes, you'll pick it up.
Okay.
What we found is the best over, over doing this in other communities would be, everybody gets the same size can, sixty-four gallon, they don't want to participate, they don't cut, they don't have to take the can, but they won't get their service if they put it out. What that does is on trash day, and I believe there's on Friday, Fridays, or Thursdays, whenever we pick up the recycling, we do the same.
Thursday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday, yeah, so we call those the green days. And it would be all uniform, it'd be no bags, it'd just be nice-looking cans. By the way, you can design the can, too, with your town press, or whatever you want on it, so that's what you can do, so it looks nice throughout the town, there's no mess to deal with, it, it's just a great.
And I think one of the challenges that we always have in, is in that if, if our day to pick up the grass clippings was on a Thursday, and let's take, let's say that the town is at fault, and we didn't pick up, that person's on Thursday, it's there at least a good week, and it starts to ferment. And not only that, if there's clippings, and maybe you can address this a little bit better, Dan, what I, what I read about is that, you know, grass clippings with fertilizers and the other organics that, that are in the, the clippings, if we get rain, and this goes through our storm system, it takes additional, it's, it could be a mess to, to treat, and I wish we had servants right here making the help.
They don't treat storms.
Oh, we don't, what, is there, what's, is there any feedback from the state?
That, that I can answer, that's funny, you can answer that question.
Okay.
Cindy, Cindy will come up here, who's at the Water Management.
Good.
You can answer all of that, this, this opens up, this opens up another thing, so.
Come upstairs.
If you stand up if you want.
All right. There's a chair, isn't there?
Oh, chairs.
I guess there's all these chairs here.
I'll take a small chair.
All right. This is good, I love this participation.
We have a full round.
Cindy Ojo Batini is in part of the program. Okay, give it, lay it on us, what's?
Basically, we tried this, the town tried this in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. What got us turned around with putting the yard waste in trash cans is the Cecil County landfill, they actually stopped collecting yard waste, and that kind of ruined our initiative. And it's actually on our website still, for residents to put grass on their cans, for us to collect them, that's from two thousand and eight. If the town continues to collect yard waste the way we're doing, it's counteractive to what we have, the watershed implementation plan, which I'm pretty sure Gene's probably mentioned to you.
Putting it curbside.
Yes, putting it curbside.
Yeah, that's.
The plan is basically to reduce nitrogen and phosphorus from going into our local waterways. And a lot of, a lot of, the main part of that is non-point source pollution. Yard waste is non-point source pollution, the fertilizers and pesticides and all of that. So if we continue to allow residents to dump their yard waste in curbside, and allow it to go through our storm sewer system, it will create more nitrogen and phosphorus for us to get rid of. Now, this is already an unfunded mandate for us to take on, so by continuing the way we're going, we're just going to keep recycling the same issue. With trying, with Tri-State in two thousand and seven to two thousand and eight, the issue we ran into was, Tri-State was not able to collect a lot of the bags that were, I guess, filled with water, and I guess, after storms, and other yard waste, we found concrete blocks, we found microwaves, we found televisions, we found all kind of things in these waste cans. So what we had to do was send our, send our maintenance guys to go out after Tri-State and collect this, so this caused more strain on our staff. The best option, in my opinion, would be to eliminate it altogether. But starting with Waste Management and doing this, this way is a good start, a great start into helping our watershed implementation plan. Brush is fine, but yard waste is really the issue, and we really need to do something about that. A lot of the surrounding municipalities, I've talked to Newark, I've talked to Middletown, I've talked to Aberdeen, they're all shying away from collecting yard waste curbside, because it's affecting, they're all a part of this watershed implementation plan as well. And sooner or later, the state's going to come down and start enforcing this plan. And we don't, the town does not want to get caught still doing old practices that they want us to change. So it's a great step forward in helping toward this watershed implementation plan.
Wow. That's pretty darn good. It sounded like you was giving a video.
Yeah.
Was this one of your students?
No, he was a lawyer, no, he was. So, that was good. But it was good information, Sid, but I'm sure you asked a question and touched the base about what we used to do, though I heard Jeff mention that we can take bags, we turned away from the bags, because the, the landfill wouldn't take the plastic, they wouldn't take this, and I heard you when you said that, and that's what I was going to ask a question about, and pledge, you brought shit in there, that, that, I would have really messed everything up.
That's when they started the single string recycling, I think that's when they just started that. And they told us not to bring the yard waste anymore, and we just did all this work and informing the residents about putting it in the bags, they said, you can't take it anymore.
We still do get yard waste.
But you, do you all take it to the Cecil County?
We would take it to Cecil County.
Okay.
We just, we just take, pay, take the fines.
Yeah, they, you know what, I would say around two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, they went back to collecting it with the single stream, they, they saw it was good initially, but.
If, if we put, if we put the grass clippings in with regular waste, regular trash, what happens to us? You won't take it. You won't take it? We will, the vote will be rejected, and then we have to incur the cost to remove it from the facility. We're still allowed to go back to it.
Yeah, they're still.
Okay, I didn't know. Yeah, you can't take, you can't take recycled materials, van, plastic, the, some kind of plastic bags are from, and then the yard waste dirt, brush.
Let me understand this, we, we've tried to get the town to go to mulching their grass, so to just, mulching the grass.
That's the best option.
You know, it was so, I stopped mulching it, because I know you, my belt came off several times. But, so where we used to go, which we're comfortable with, myself, is taking our bag and dumping it after we pick up our grass. So what you're saying is, you would want people to take the bag and dump it in this can now, had a can, stood it on the side of the street, because the thing, I really don't want to go to bags, putting, raging it up and putting it in bags, because that's just a lot of work on.
Yeah, the can. It's just a tote, right?
It's just a tote. And it has a connected lid, which is waterproof, so you can get the water inside the can, so if it rains, we're still going to pick it up and sit there for a week, and it does, we have the, in the contract, a forty-eight hour return cost.
What is the cost?
That's going to, that, that's another issue, I have, we have to figure out man-hours and, and cost of toters, and I can say the average cost of toter is about sixty bucks per home.
Sixty-four gallon?
Sixty-four gallon toter, and we'll say clearly on top, I mean, this is also going to be mixed organics, so you can throw food waste in there, too, the crab feast, or whatever you guys have, if you don't have to throw that in the trash. So eventually, you can train residents to put food in there, too, and that will reduce the weight on the trash, but, yeah, so you're looking at an initial cost of close to three hundred thousand if you count just the totes. But we can work that in over a contract time, you know, depreciation, et cetera. So it ends up not being a large cost.
I'd like to see those numbers.
Well, the other thing, you said, we, we tried it with Tri-State, and then you found a whole bunch of microwaves and other.
Yes, but with, with their cans, they'll probably be, it'll probably be much less.
You still have, you still have stuff in there, so then we're still talking about a cost of.
No, we'll, we'll.
So even if they put a microwave in there, you're still gonna take it?
Yeah, we'll call the town, or they'll call us and tell us, and usually our drivers communicate that to the manager's office, and then they'll tell us and send a different truck out. I mean, you got shipper feeding today, we have to come out and pick that up to the resident.
Because you're gonna charge us?
Yes.
That's, that's where I was going.
Yeah, but it's, it'd be a lot less expensive for us to do it than to have him, because we have a trust in the area.
I got what you're saying, still a cost.
Yes, I can write a twenty-five dollar paper or something.
Per place, per place stuff. So if, if there's, we have, what, sixty-eight hundred homes, is that about right?
Yeah, but they're all, some of them are downtown.
You serve roughly fifty-one homes.
Still, so if you're doing, if you take a thousand of those and do that, sometimes twenty-five at one time.
Right, but we found in our experience with other towns when we've done this, and they're so clearly marked and you have, have other trash, the other way to get around it would be also to provide free trash and recycled trash and organics. So if you provide free trash, then people are using all free trash for what they, that's what we did in Middletown and a couple of places.
And, and I guess, there's, I'd always like to know, do you know how many homes actually in the town of Elton are using, putting grass clippings on the side, is that, do we know how many pickups we're doing?
I'm one.
I'd say my neighborhood, not everyone in my neighborhood is, but I know I'm not.
Well, the service costs around forty-five hundred.
No, sixty percent, it's hard to tell about Cindy.
Sixty percent put them on, put it on the street, okay.
A lot of the newer developments, you see less because they want to keep it nice and pristine and fresh. Pigeon's one of those who actually discussed opting out of putting it curbside because of, it didn't look, it's that reason, so. I mean, that's, I'd say fifty, sixty percent.
Very good. Is there any other questions related to grass clippings here at?
Good question. Is Middletown a pilot program you're doing right now? Is that the first town that's taking advantage of this?
On this coast, yes.
On this coast.
It's very big on West Coast, excuse me, that's all we do on the West Coast. I, I'm trying to implement it on the East Coast here, so I started off in Middletown, recommended it to you folks, recommended it to a couple of other towns in the area. It's a, it's a, a lot of homeowners associations have approached us about it. It's, it's a great product, it looks nice, it's easy to do, and it's good for anybody.
That's the other thing, I'm sure he asked you, the homeowners associations, some of them may not want to buy into this, and they might be having them in their contract, and some people have already had their ways set when they buy their, their homes. I'm just talking about some people that have the homeowners association, even though we're suggesting that, gotta make sure that.
Is that what you're saying? They have occasion where.
So how does that work? If they're in town.
The only customers that are, I think, they're their own grass. Homeowners, uh, we're. Take your time. Yeah. They throw crap after they grass out in the street all day.
I'm gonna ask him because in case people are, I'm not sure.
And you could, you could also make an, an option, option program, but, because that's why, they pay for whether they want to use it or not. So they can take the can, or they don't have to take the can, and they just don't get the services there on the can.
What, what part of Middletown doing this, was there any education at the, a town gave the homeowners or anything like that?
Yeah, I have some great.
To give it buy-in?
Yeah, I have some great PDFs and great brochures I can forward to the town, and you guys can use, put in newsletters. Do that, I have presentations, I did three trainings for Town Hall Means for the towns where I came in and everybody came in, and I explained how it works, what it does, what's good for the environment, and why we're doing it, why we suggest. And eventually, people found it, and we have to take the trash down every other week, because there's a half a bag of trash in the cans now because it's all single stream and organics. I mean, there's literally nothing in their house that should be going in the trash, and it's all diapers and stuff.
Could you, could you supply us with people that you, of our size, on the West Coast, wherever it, wherever it is, people that have been in the program for a while, and also people that have gotten out of your program?
Sure. Do you mean left the? Well, it's mandatory in, on the West Coast. Single stream is mandatory.
So it wasn't a volunteer type of thing, it was, it was forced upon?
You're right, and theirs is a little different.
Do you have anybody that's volunteered, that has done it?
Just Middletown is, right now, is a volunteer that started up, and their first pickup is on Friday. So I'd say probably about a month, we'll, we'll have a good reading of how much weight we have food and organics that we're pulling out of their trash.
I think nobody in Middletown.
And the other thing about the.
Yeah, I think we know a lot of people.
We know a lot of people, the town mayor.
I can give you their contact.
The town manager over there.
I can give you their contact, the town manager.
When I, I gave you here a couple of times.
Yeah, we got the ratings.
Yeah.
And take our, take our cost analysis.
The other, the other benefit, other than the yard, other than the food waste program that Jeff's talking about is, involves Cindy in this one, is Middletown got out of it because of the MS four permit, because we have a permit to discharge, you know, stormwater back into the bed. And again, if we put it right on the curb, they're gonna have a headache, so that's, that's the other thing. That's, that was the number one reason, I'm seeing how they got out, and then it, you know, flowed all that way accordingly. That's, that's the main objective, if you get it off the curb, it makes it easier, it's easier, most importantly, it has to go through stormwater permits. It's putting it in, you know.
So I would recommend for you guys, is I'll put together a proposal for you, where we would provide free cans for each waste stream, which is highly recommended. That way, you don't get anybody throwing microwaves and trash in different, any of the funds. Plus, on trash day, it's very uniform throughout the town. And I'd urge you guys, if you go drive through one of the towns that we do have the cans out, and I'll, I'll send you a list of that to see how nice it does look, as nice as trash can can look, you know. And that way, I'll give you their proposal for that, I'll give you all the information, and then I'll, I'll do it also where it's bagged, which we don't recommend, it's a little bit more expensive, but I can put all that together for you and put some numbers, now that you've given me some good information.
Very good. Are we talking about? Yeah, yes, sir. You're talking about bags being more expensive because they're more labor intensive to deal with it, rather than just dumping a can?
Correct, so the cans are guys, and this one's a rear lid because of the wires, and so we can't use the single arm. So what they have to do is they have a helper, and he gets out, puts on a truck, and lets go, and the truck dumps it. So, and the bags can't do that, either have to physically lift it, put it in. Costs more insurance, costs more, and all that, so.
We're, we're truly in the concept stage, it's here of this, but if anyone from the audience has any comments or questions, yes, there we go, Debbie Store, one hundred Lincoln Avenue.
I would just like to verify, I would like to verify what you're picking up, grass, leaves, and light brush?
Plants.
And organic, whatever. And how, and so the town needs to keep in mind that there's still heavy brush. And I also think that I, we want to bring this up for a while, it really doesn't concern today, but I think the town needs to drive around on recycle day and see the lack of participation in recycling.
Thank you.
Because it's very light, in my opinion.
Anyone else? Thank you, thank you guys very much, very informative. Thank you. Okay, what do we got up here next? Okay, I think we got Mr. Mike Davitt on the, on the, to discuss the public works agreement. And when Mike's here, you know, I'll think he has to come up unless.
Uh, he wants to come up, basically, a number of years ago, there were a couple of developers, actually, deal with a limited partnership, single point vendor, limited partnership, and started a development plot, Walnut Hill, I'm sorry, Village Coil Rail Ridge, Section Two. And because of whatever vigories and, and of the economy, it stopped operating, you know, developing. I think there's seventeen lots left, you have seventeen lots. In order for those lots to be developed, the public works agreement needs to be renewed in order for the public improvements to be completed. The interest in that property, particularly the road bed and the stormwater pond and any associated public works, or public improvements, falls to Walnut Hill Roads LLC, they're the successor to these two former corporations. Mr. Davitt, I think he's a managing, managing member of that organization. And in order for them to move forward with the sale and development of these lots, they need this public works agreement. So that's basically, this follows the format in which that public improvements would be finished. All the sewer, water, road bed, curb, and things that are already there, stormwater ponds there, but acts as sediment pond rather than stormwater pond, which has to be converted after the lots are done. Finished course of two-inch, newly, a two-inch course of finished hot mix asphalt has to be added, sidewalks are gonna be constructed. In this agreement, it calls for the developer of each lot to build that section of sidewalk, but Walnut Hill Roads LLC will actually do the stormwater, I mean, not stormwater, stormwater pond conversion from sediment to stormwater management, and also do finished course of pavement during the course of, probably after the lots are already done. Normally, we don't do the final course of pavement because of heavy equipment comes in there for excavation, and the lot, and they tear the road all up, so when they're all done, and you can put your two-inch hot mix asphalt down, seal it, and then, then it'll be converted to the town, it'll be conveyed to the town. So basically, this agreement captures the conditions and circumstances under which the town would ultimately assume the burden of those public improvements, which we do normally, of course, of development in the town.
Going back, you know, I can only go back on my history from many, many years ago, we had a lot of public works agreement through here all the time. There's, there's, there's nothing different than this public works agreement that we should be aware of than any other public works agreement.
Well, what, what is unusual about this particular agreement is it picks up the public improvements by successor. Normal, normally, I'm not gonna say normally, because we've had a number of conditions in which successors have occurred, but generally, a developer, once they get a public works agreement, they own all the lots, and then they go and develop and sell the lots, and do all the improvements, like, of course, is a good example. So that, you know, that's all done, and a course of time. This, this particular project was interrupted, I'd say interrupted by the economy, and now that Mr. Davitt would like to move forward with the public, public improvement in order for, I guess the sales, the lots are already sold, aren't they?
They're not all sold at this point.
Well, the intent is to sell all the lots and develop. So in order for him to do that, we have to have a public improvements done, completed on that project.
Do you have any concerns about this agreement?
No, as long as he buys it, and I'm sure he will, shouldn't be any problems.
Anybody on the group have any?
Well, the, the last agreement, the provisions to finish the roads and such, we had a, we had a, there was a line of credit that the bank didn't fulfill, or something like that, where the developers.
He has to have a letter of credit.
Letter of credit.
For this, a letter of credit would be in an amount of two hundred and three thousand dollars, I think.
Is that enough?
Two hundred and three thousand oh forty-two, that's our estimate for completing the public improvements. As he completes those improvements, or when he completes those improvements, will reduce that letter of credit. All that letter of credit does, except for a warranty amount, that letter of credit guarantees that they'll be done in that course of time. If he defaults, the town can propose on that letter of credit, and then complete the improvements ourselves.
And, and with all due respect, I'm jumping into the middle of this. In, in jumping into the middle of this, when I was talking to people at Walnut Hill, it had been some time that these improvements were supposed to be done, hadn't been done, and that there was, the town didn't have any safeguards. When I had asked that question, there was a line of credit the bank didn't fill, and had, or a letter of credit. They, they didn't fulfill, and we went to the builder, the developer, that it wasn't fulfilled. Why wasn't the things done before?
I had to, I had to get back and look at the records, what happened on that. I know we don't have a letter of credit to sign. I don't know.
I can tell you, PNC called every letter of credit they had at. And, and they just wouldn't renew. As a matter of fact, it's extremely difficult to get one right now, for many banks.
That's what I understand.
Yeah.
The, how many lots are open, seventeen?
Seventeen.
And how many would you have sold right now?
At this point, we have the first one sold for a model house.
Okay, so there's still sixteen, that'll be vacant then.
There's a contract on the second one also.
And then, a, a letter of credit, if I, I'm assuming that's, that's, if I'm building a house, the bank is gonna give me X amount of dollars, and somebody's gonna hold that in reserve to make sure that the project is finished, and I'm assuming that's what a letter of credit is also, that they're gonna hold that, so you went to the bank and you get a hundred dollars. They're, they're gonna hold twenty dollars back just to make sure that everything's finished, they didn't do that in this case?
They canceled everyone's letter of credit, not just this one, but everyone's. As a matter of fact, they canceled everyone's development plot, and that's why a number of folks went out of business. Because we had to pay the loans off, or, or they optioned everything off.
It just doesn't seem right.
No, it's truly.
No, it doesn't, but it doesn't seem right for the town, though, not to be able to, to have residents inconvenience because of, of PNC and/or the economy, or whatever the case may be. Where, where does that push, put us as far as making sure that they're, they're made whole in a timely manner?
Well, see, we could've continued building houses, but we could've had the downgrade, and changed the development. And we made a conscious decision six years ago, just to stop building them, so the economy would support homes that's similar to what's there already.
I think when the, around two thousand eight, when you had, when that problem happened.
Yes.
And I think that's when PNC, it may have, it used to be Architile Bank.
Yeah.
And then PNC came in then, so I know they did a lot of, a lot of cleaning houses, we.
If I was a resident there, I'd, I'd be extremely upset.
One of the things that Mr. Davitt did, and I'll, you know, if you'd like to acknowledge what he did, he finished that course of, of base course there around Mr. Bernard's house there, in front there, on Henry. Because that was really bad, and he, he finished that, refinished that. So I think that's why he was in here last, thanking you for fixing that. So that, that base course was repaired, so the road is travelable. You were up there earlier, and you didn't see that.
I've seen it.
It's all been patched and everything.
I've seen it.
So that, that was a good sign.
That was, that was that way for what, two years?
Yeah, long time.
And, and that's, that's the only thing that I'm fearful of now, and going around, I've only heard one side of it, going around knocking on doors, please vote for me. You know, people were extremely upset because they, they go into the powers that be, and everybody's hollering and screaming, saying this needs to be fixed, the contract says it's supposed to be fixed in a certain amount of time, wasn't done, and then that's what I'm saying just right now, is how is this contract different from the last contract that we, we protect our residents?
You know, I think you have a very valid point in what you're saying. Normally, with a public works agreement, that if there's a line of credit up there, it's to protect the town also, to get the job finished. And I had no idea, we'll have to research that, why we didn't have that money available.
PNC canceled it.
They canceled it, I get that.
They just canceled it.
Right.
They could cancel this one too, as, as, I mean, could they, or not?
I don't know the banking industry, what they can do or can't do.
Some do, some don't. And it sounds like these companies, and we're with them, they're quick to figure it out, and, and.
Can we find out this, can we find out this one?
May I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
And, and since nineteen seventy-seven, we've never defaulted on one of those.
It was your revoke one. And they, and they revoked, and they revoked?
I know, I'm a call.
Wow.
Let me check with the.
It isn't, it is, listen, it was, it was some tough times there, I, I don't think I know of any.
We know.
Yeah, it did. Any questions about the public works agreement with Louis, or?
Yeah, we need a.
I know there's gonna be more information, if, if brings to us, is there anyone that has a comment? Anyone here from Walnut Hills? Very good, thank you, Mr. Davitt. All righty. Next item up is we are entertaining a lease agreement with Sandy Island LLC. What do you got, Louis?
Uh, Mr. Downs, I want to comment, he produced a, a draft agreement and distributed it to the board.
A little ago, we got the first draft, and we now have, I think, a third draft that has incorporated all the comments that we've received. The one question that I had was the actual address of English Property, which I got from her today. There was a little bit of confusion on, on what the.
The one-on-one?
It was one-on-one, yeah.
Right.
And, so, I think that's the only thing that needs to be.
I'm thinking that, you got soft voices.
I think that's the only thing that needs to be.
Get together.
Oh, yeah.
I hadn't seen any additional drafts or copies. I hadn't seen any additional drafts or copies. Nor do I need to see a draft until it's ready to be. I want to see the final thing once it's done. So I haven't seen anything. I don't know if the rest of the board has seen anything. I saw the original?
Yep.
Kind of the one with some comments on it?
Yep, and we've incorporated those comments. We did that several days ago. And then I think we had a couple more comments, they got wrapped up today. Michelle, did you get a copy of the updated? And I think if I'm not mistaken, the only thing at this point was we still had not a correct address for the property.
That is correct. The third paragraph indicates that the lots or the parking spaces are adjacent to the tenant's property at 111th and 13th. And that's incorrect. That's the question.
Right. And then there were some, there were some other issues that were not addressed previously, like that are terms in the lease that need to be provided that we left blank because they hadn't been addressed, which was what was the amount. And I think that this group hadn't really addressed that.
No, we didn't.
And then, was there any?
Um, where there's that security deposit.
Yeah, security deposit. So it's relatively minor issues, the text is there and-
And what was the term of the lease?
It was yearly renewable, automatically renewable unless terminated in writing by either side.
Which I think is very fair. It's not a, not a lease, it's going to be perpetuity or ninety-nine years or anything. It's year for year and if the economy changes and the way we want it to, maybe there'll have to be some adjustments at some point. But I think it's, the amount of money is something that the group would have to decide. I think there was a thousand dollars, is that?
I looked that in there, but I-
I know we saw one.
Twenty thousand, but I-
Well, and I took the liberty to leave that out, not to be disrespectful, but I knew this, this group had not addressed that issue. And so I thought it was best to leave it blank, you guys can put what it is.
Okay.
But that was something that we just left blank at this point.
So you'll have the final copy per se, it's here?
Yeah.
Okay, the final's copy here, I guess we can review it the next couple of days?
Is there going to be a compensation?
Yeah, absolutely, I think there needs to be.
Well, it's on me, that's what he doesn't know.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a industry standard that pays on a percentage of revenue without looking at some business books? Because I wouldn't show you my books. Because I wouldn't.
Yeah, that's right.
I think the short answer is no.
Because there's no formula?
No, no. How do you lease some parking spaces? I mean, you could, you could look at from generation of revenue, what does, what do those lots generate over the course of a year?
It came out to about $3,000 a year for third parking spaces.
Right. And-
So based on that formula, it's a hundred dollars a spot?
A hundred dollars a spot.
A hundred dollars a spot and-
But then there was some conversation after the meeting, I'll give you a reference, there was some conversation, I was part of two, just sort of believing and that there is at least a recognition of increased business there and the other benefits that the town derives from those. They're real, but they're hard to quantify. And so, you know, it might not just be the value of the leased spaces or, you know, the revenue that they've generated over the course of years just from putting quarters in the shit. So that's, you know, you guys make the big bucks, you tell me what to plug in there and we'll plug in.
There you go. Well, listen, I'm going to reach out to the public here. I know that we have, might be some comments here tonight. Miss Debbie Store, 100 Lincoln Avenue, I think has a comment or maybe some guidance.
You're talking about the lots, the parking places down in the municipal lot?
That is correct. In the municipal lot, the municipal lot that would be-
There's seven or nine spaces that were talked about previously.
Yes.
Am I to assume that you decided to go ahead and do it? Was that, has that been better done?
That's what we're discussing about right now, yes.
I thought you were discussing the contract. Have you, do you need to discuss that you're actually going to give them the spaces or whatever you're doing with them, but?
Well, I don't think we can make that decision tonight.
No, but it's been discussed before and now you're discussing the contract. So it seems to me like you need to discuss that you're actually going to go ahead with the project.
Well, if you'd like to know that answer in consensus, if I took a consensus straw boat, I'm absolutely in favor of it.
Mr. Mayor, does there some thing as a consensus in a workshop? No. I know I'm not speaking, but this is why you're at right now. The way you are right now is because the board at a workshop made this as a consensus thing. It's never come before the public.
It's going to be in front of the public on Wednesday, July 16.
And it's, and it seems like to me, like Debbie says, everything is cut and dry then, right?
No, no, well, it does the-
Because there are people who has made a complaint in the town in reference of, it's not against their business. Are we going to give the whole town, is the Taylor downtown going to get non-parking spots? Is the beauty shops that's been there forever going to get non-things? The only thing I'm saying is you were setting an awful big precedence.
No, listen, I'm not arguing that, but I want to get back to, we haven't voted on this agreement. We are going to vote it on July 16, but I just want to let you know that I am in favor of this agreement. And it seemed like they're kind of giving the direction that the group is in favor and then we're going to vote on it on the 16th. So we have from today until the next Wednesday to discuss, to make that vote in the public meeting.
Okay. Then let me, let me say this. We have spent a million dollar downtown through the Elton lots.
Yeah.
Right? Now, if the town is ever going to be revived, so what are you going to do if you need those kind of parking spots? Here you have a people here that are like, I think it's great what they're going for the town of Elton, but yet we're setting a hell of a precedence.
And I think we're protecting the town by only doing it year by year.
Well, I, when you're building on things, come on, Rob. I, you know, I heard today that they got a $225,000 grant, is that correct, Mary Jo?
No, that's not correct.
Pardon me?
That's not correct.
Okay.
No, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand is what the grant is being applied for.
It hasn't been, it hasn't gone yet.
Right, yes, sir, that's-
I just have a concern. It's not a debate revitalizing Elton, because this is what this thing's all about. This is what the Elton Alliance has done for seventeen years down here, trying to protect things, trying to get things going. And now we've given parking places.
Well, I disagree to say that this isn't really an alliance issue right now. The parking, the parking lot that we're talking about really isn't coming from the alliance, it's coming from a business coming into the town of Elton wanting to rent for at least nine spots.
How many spots have you known as a mayor and a former mayor and all the rest of these people? How many of those people, and I know this is 2014, how many of these other people have granted parking spaces in Elton?
We probably haven't, maybe that's why we're getting into the shape we're in.
I think, I think leading sheriff has a lot to do with it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lemon, please give your address for me real quick.
103 Walnut.
Yes, sir.
I think this is a good idea, but I think there should be consideration on this lease. The organization is benefiting on its nation paper. You guys should have to talk about much. I think that's important.
Thank you, sir. I don't disagree. And I think that's what we're discussing right now. The other, the other thing that I've asked Mr. Downs about is if we do for one, do we do for all? And that's something that legally that we need to look into. And I know that we've talked about it briefly. But if you do do for one, we had a letter from a business owner that wanted to lease, I think it was five spots, is what they wanted to do, right? And then we said no. So I mean, that's a thing that legally, what shape do we put ourselves into? I mean, I think it's a good idea, but legally, I think we need to make sure that we're protected as a town first and then go ahead and do it.
Thank you. Any board members, anyone else have any comments tonight? Any comments?
No, we, I think we're pushing in that direction to have these spots leased, but I think there's some other things that we in the board need to make sure that we are doing whatever we can to protect the town. Does this set a precedence for, you know, somebody else? I even have a question here as far as the security deposit year by year and, you know, when we can change the lease, you know, I need more understanding with that as well. But that's what I feel at this point.
So you're looking at, to kind of bring something to us to vote on Wednesday night, you've got, you've got the amount of spots, you've got the term of the lease, you've got a, what you're looking for is a security deposit amount?
I, no, they're blanks.
They're blanks, yes. So-
Once again, that's going to be my question. Is it necessary to have a security deposit when you also have an agreement which is going to be year by year and also the opportunity for either party to dissolve the lease?
It's not necessary to do, no. I mean, let's face it, it's a parking lot.
Okay.
It's not going.
Right.
So it's not like it's going to get stolen or burned down. It's going to be there. And so, you know, you may say or think that it's unnecessary to have a security deposit.
Right.
Or to specify some that you think is appropriate.
Right.
But I don't think it's necessary that you have a security deposit.
That's what I'm saying.
It's an issue that hadn't been addressed by the group and we wanted to preserve as an issue for you to discuss as well as the amount for the lease itself.
What, go ahead.
I understand that. So if it's a year to year lease, when would either party have an opportunity to break that? I mean, what parameters would be there necessary if that was to occur?
Ninety days.
Ninety days?
Prior to the end of the year.
Okay.
So it would automatically renew, at least the way it was presently written, it would automatically renew each year unless at a point, not, not less than ninety days prior to the end, either party had given written of it. So that if you or someone else wanted to change the terms of the lease, you could do that at that point, right? And again, that would be subject to both parties reaching agreement on the terms, but any other?
Well, I would say this, that on Wednesday's night, night's meeting, if we're ready to make a motion to approve the lease agreement, in that motion, I want the amount, I want everyone to kind of think about what they think the amount might be and you can add that right into the figure. And if it's voted on and approved, we move forward.
Does that give you enough time to find out as far as the legality? Anybody ask me now, of course?
You should discuss it now, so that the document is ready to be signed.
Yeah, yes. I'm happy with the thousand dollars.
I'm happy with the thousand.
I'm happy-
I just said to the mayor, this is workshop, so if the amount is holding us up, I think we need to discuss that now. So when we do vote next week, we have the document in front of us to sign, it's voted on and we move forward.
All right.
I mean, because we have had, I know I sold the thousand dollars and I don't-
But one of the things we probably want to do, because this is an agreement between both parties, probably want to have an agreement on the other party's side before you vote on it. Because I don't know if they've seen the lease agreement or terms, so if we vote on it, but we don't know if the other side will agree to it. Is agreement, is agreement with those terms.
That's a good point.
That's a very good point.
What are they voting on? Negotiation. You talked to them?
I haven't. I have not.
You've never really talked to them, have you, personally?
Never talked, that's why I said it's workshop. Never discussed.
Never talked to them.
Running out.
If she wants to-
Well, if you know a figure, like you said-
Well, I shot out a figure of a thousand dollars. We pay three?
Two to three.
Yeah, if it's, we had thirty parking spots and once again, I am extremely flexible on whatever this board wants to go with. I don't know what that magic number should be. You're considering, you're thinking three thousand or four thousand?
I'll think of two thousand.
And what are you, what are you making, Charlie?
It's early, I'm thinking of the seven spots and where those spots bring per spot during the course of the year. What's the most conceivable amount of money?
Twenty-six dollars.
It's nine spots, right.
Yeah, nine spots. So it's currently bringing in, let's say, revenue side, about $900 total.
Right.
For the year previous.
For a year.
What's that taking away from anybody else parking, exactly what Mr. Downs was talking about?
You know, we're talking about economic development is what we're discussing here. So, but let's hope we have a parking problem in a year because they're doing something different outside dining and bringing more people to town. I really think, you know, that's the way it has to be looked at, no matter who it is. I mean, it's all about economic development, what this board can do. And that's something that's in our hands right now, is something like this, the parking lot.
Is three, is three thousand dollars, is that, is that insulting?
Uh, no.
She's the business owner, right.
I don't agree in paying more than what we're getting right now, especially because if we take, if we would take nine cars now, why would we pay three thousand instead of the nine hundred you're getting right now? Especially if we're bringing, or we're supposed to bring more economic development to town. I personally don't agree with that.
So it's an extra $2,000 as far as a cost difference though, in that-
I mean, we're doing an investment and I have no comment saying that right now we have invested more than $1.25 million in Elton.
Appreciate it.
And we're happy with that. But the only, the only business was bringing people in town is us.
I know.
So I don't agree with that. I would love to see more, but there's not. So the pressure is immense right now.
What were you thinking?
A few dollars more than what's already there, I'm just thinking. I don't know.
So you're thinking?
Typically, any fair deal to either party is usually that if one party walks away and is extremely happy, it's unfair to the other party. You know, usually when you walk away of a negotiation, it's like, ah, almost got all of it. And both parties need to feel that way. You know, I mean, that's fair to both sides, at least in my dealings.
When we first started talking about this, we talked about what changes we can make to not just accommodate, not just the me-hangs, but also Mr. Jimmy next door.
Sure.
We talked about how we can make changes and again, we talked about, and it was brought up in the town, because I remember the party came and spoke in front of the board requesting what they wanted to do. And we all thought it was a great idea to have outside seating and that the outside seating then led to, we would like to do something with the parking. Now, the last time I heard, we were looking over contract to try to get a fair value price for the owners, because we're only getting so much per year from those meters. And we weren't trying to double it by getting two or three thousand, or hear me out. We just wanted to see, we're already taking this into next two or three years, it was a $30,000 or whatever it was for those parking spaces. So the owner made a suggestion where we would make an offer and we never really came down to a dollar amount. But I remember our commission, you said that's trying to come to a fair value price, not trying to insult down, but yet still making what the town is bringing in that year. So that has changed since the last time I came to the board. What we need to do is come out hopefully to a fair value. And I thought a thousand dollars was what they came up with and that's what was discussed with me.
So that's not what was discussed with me, what was said before we came to the board?
Well, no, that's when you asked me, when I first walked in, we were talking two to three thousand. I would say this, I would say this. We're currently at $3,000 for the total parking lot. It's under a hundred or right at a hundred dollars a spot. There's going to be an inconvenience factor to some of, losing those nine spots for a year. There's going to be an inconvenience factor to some of, losing those nine spots for a year. And I hope, I hope we come back in a year and we may need those spots. And Minihans will have to buy another building to put those spots on. So we can get our spots back for parking. I know it's not going to happen overnight, but... Listen, I'm just trying to mediate. If we're a couple thousand there, let's kind of shoot out some numbers here. Charlie, where you want to be at with this?
Fifteen hundred at least.
Fifteen hundred.
And I know you said a thousand, but still, you know, even though they've come here, they've done well. And you assume that what you made previously, you'd make again. You don't know that. And to me, that's the X factor or the unknown entity of that.
And I'm going to go with Charlie. I'm going to go with Charlie to fifteen hundred dollars. And we get you guys to raise a, and they may not accept it.
I have to stick with my gun with a thousand. I mean, they're investing a lot in this town. And it's a chancy investment. And I feel we need to do something to accommodate. And I think a thousand dollars is fair.
So Ken, Earl, how do you feel?
I have dollars, not just fair value, that's what I'm going to state.
But could you take the lean years and the max years and cut it down the middle? Because, and again, I hope that they build a crap load more. I really do. I mean, it's fantastic you're there.
Well, let me ask this, can you drop down to fifteen hundred dollars?
If that's what the board wants?
Earl, we have a consensus.
I'm with Earl that if it's fair all the way around, in great times, how much did we make on that? Seriously, in great times, it wasn't three thousand dollars a year, it was how much a year? And that's what we're expecting to do as them being the anchor. You know, so they're going to make more money, more money, more money as we go along, too. You know, so why don't we just take a median of here and here? And I think to Earl's fact, that would be, to me, not Earl, to me, that would be the fair side then. How much was it?
Because we have a monitor.
Right.
I had, when this first came up, we'd asked a monitor, monitor it. So we just calculated from that.
So we never knew what sections made money and which ones didn't?
No, that's all collected.
So I was acting in my head.
At each meter. While the one factor, there was never requested the website information.
And they're manual meters, they don't collect data. So it's not like you had a chip in there that you can go back to that meter and you know how much that meter earned.
Believe me, it's a joke.
Yeah, that's fine. And look, I'm not, I'm not trying to step over a dollar to pick up a nickel. I'm not, I'm not trying to do that. So I mean, if it's fifteen hundred dollars, go for fifteen hundred dollars.
And I feel comfortable with a thousand. Charlie, feel comfortable with the concept?
I do.
All right, that'd be kind of our concept number. And we may vote it down, we may vote for it. Yes, and we'll get that proposal over to them this week sometime. Anything else, John?
It seems to me that the board is wrestling the two things at the same time. One of them is, what we want to do was fair in this particular instance. And the other one is, how do we deal with it in larger context to do the work out? I want to hear comments from the audience about, it's not just about this project, but about how are we going to address this when sixteen others come and want to do something similar? And the answer is, you may have sixteen different answers. And I think maybe what I can do is help develop some standards on how you would address these kinds of questions. So that we can have some, you can help with some...
Basically, a threshold, develop a threshold in which that use of lots by other people, because we've had an upper situation where people actually went to buy spots on the street.
Right, right.
Where we will sell spots on public streets.
And so maybe criteria, we probably need to establish some criteria in how we'll address these issues in the future. Because the person that simply wants to buy some spots on the street is probably not really, maybe not really going to provide economic benefit to the town, to the residents of the town and the other businesses of the town. Excuse me, whereas what, some of the things, some of the comments that I've heard are that, let's face it, Minihans has become an anchor in downtown Elton. If that is important to the town, from the comments I've heard, that it be successful. And so where you may want to come out, and this is, you know, you guys decided this, where you may want to say, that you may, that you may want to charge a lesser amount here, another project that, or proposal that may not really provide many benefits to the town, you may not even want to do. And so maybe in conjunction with this, over the next week, we can help grow together some criteria to help in the comments. So that we have some, so the people of the town have some sense that this is not just a giveaway for friends and family in the town.
Yes, I agree with you.
This is benefiting the town and helping to the town.
All right, thank you. All right, let's call up Mr. Josh. I'm not sure if you wanted to come up for this or not, but we're going to have the discussion on the Zebulon Hollingsworth House.
I'll sit up there and answer your question.
All right, we got some mold mitigation and repairs, I think Louis has a...
I'll get him to run.
Probably get us all run down and everyone else a little rundown on what we're doing here.
Back in, back on January fourteenth, I think the Josh and his group, the Elton, I mean, the historic Elton Landing Foundation convened a meeting at the Zebulon Hollingsworth House in historic Elton Landing. And when they entered the building, they found that it was a scrimbot, so to speak. The third floor heater had failed. And if you want a heater that failed and you want the most damage, the third floor is the place where it's failed. And so the cascading water from the third to the second to the first floors, including the walls and other structures, created quite a problem there.
I think one of the problems that vibrates here today is not only was it water, but it was hot water.
Hot water.
Hot water, okay.
It was hot water. Very steamy in there.
Turn that to you.
Okay. Anyway, to make a long story short, we had a company, ZerPro, come in and clean up the mess, dry it out as best we could. And at the same time, concomitantly, we applied for a claim through the local government insurance trust. ZerPro was there quite a while, a couple weeks, I think, actually, and got it dried out. But the residual effect was mold, mold emerging. Probably had mold there before this happened, but this is kind of like a catalyst for its incubation and production at a higher level. The local government insurance trust had claims adjusters come down, went through it. They had a contractor come in, Van Dusen Construction, and gave estimates. Based on those estimates and the consensus of the claims adjuster and the local government insurance trust, they paid the town certain amounts of money. And those amounts of money are...
Seventy-two thousand three hundred and seven dollars.
Which included fifteen thousand dollars in mold mitigation costs. That was a limit of our coverage. Thirty-four thousand three oh seven, I think, or whatever, were ZerPro. And twenty-five thousand for the cost of restoration or repairs. The mold mitigation and the repairs are pending. So we need to put that out and have a contractor come in, do the mold mitigation. Probably bring in an industrial hygienist to do a scan for mold, you know, determine the score of something like that. And then they'll do the repairs and the painting and the best restoration we can. One of the complex issues here is that there's a large number of contents in the building. And the estimates that we have from Van Dusen includes both the basic work within the coverage of our insurance policy and to decon the contents, which is a considerable and labor intensive effort on anyone's part, no matter who it is. And that cost was forty-six thousand or something like that, or exceeded our coverage. So anyway, proposals coming from Van Dusen on Friday. However, we're not confined to the proposals. We can look to other contractors that made you this type of work. Not everybody does mold mitigation work, but there are people out there who do it. So we may get a number of proposals in order to get a value, get a better value on our dollar. But we have to reimburse for it. It's just a matter now of using that reimbursement amount to have the work done.
Lou, just to refresh my memory a little bit, the contents of the property, and Josh, you can answer. I was on the, of course, when we purchased Elk Landing, the forty-two acres, the house, I was, of course, serving at that time. I can't quite remember if the contents belonged to the town of Elton? Or did the contents belong to the Elk Landing Foundation?
Well, the town owned the property before the Elk, the historic Elk Landing Foundation existed. So any property in there could have been the town's, but I think the town conveyed the personal property.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, that's correct. So the, what I'm hearing is that the mold, after you and I spoke this morning, the mold issue is because they can't, they want to clean all the...
Every surface.
Every surface, the books.
Whether it's the books or the... And I would say that there was a couple things that were damaged, some books that are probably damaged beyond repair that I'm not sure what worth the value of cleaning them, probably just disposing them.
Is this something you think the historic landing committee could clean their own interior parts?
I think the real problem is, as I understand it, is, you know, the insurance, which the landing doesn't have any control over as far as the building itself, has this cap 15. And even excluding the content issue, it still exceeds the 15 for what they're recommending as the scope of work to repair. Now, I don't know what that leads to, town liability issue for people giving tours or anything of that nature. You know, and really, the landing is kind of stuck in the middle. You know, it's your building. I will say, for those of you that aren't familiar with the property, I've been on this board almost since the beginning, which has been about fifteen years now. Rob was mayor at the time when we made the purchase of the property and land. So the building's under a historic trust easement. And there are certain expectations for maintenance and stuff. And everything was functional. My understanding of why this whole problem occurred is everybody's aware it was really cold in January. So the first floor and second floor unit were running full tilt wide open. When the third floor unit came on, there wasn't enough flow to make that unit function properly, which is, I would say, a design flaw if I had to put my finger on the problem. You know, so then the coils froze. So then they thawed and then they sprayed boiling hot water out of an inch and a half supply pipe until it shut off, which was that same day, but it was still a tremendous amount of flow. You know, I'm not sure whether there could have been anything that we could have done to prevent it. But now we're here in a situation where we immediately dried everything out, immediately cleaned everything. You know, the landing understands that we should have been more responsible for the insurance of maybe a particular piece of furniture. But at the same time, it's priceless furniture that they can't really effectively be insured in any way. I don't know that any things really needs to be cleaned, that's the necessity that they're asking for. The problem is, somebody needs to sign off on that house is safe to be in. And this mold mitigation has to be done prior to doing the construction restoration, plaster repair, the painting. And all that stuff's relatively basic and completely covered by your insurance. So we're kind of left in the lurch here with what do you do scope wise? Do you expand it so that it makes everybody feel comfortable? Because Van Dusen had proposed two different levels of painting. And the second one did include touching each piece of furniture, touching each book. You know, some of those books are just going to have to go. Because, you know, I believe it was like a hundred dollars or something to wipe down a book and certify it clean.
Is it a book case, a physical value, a count split?
It's, some of those are first edition books, you know, eighteen hundreds books. Some of them have intrinsic value to the landing, but, you know, some of them have been damaged at this point beyond repair. Some of those books were there more or less as display. The books in question, there was a, there was a bookcase that didn't have necessarily books relevant to the property, but just old books in the case. And there's the ones that were really wet and had, there's mold. But there's some couches and some other pieces of furniture there that were also wet, but don't really exhibit the mold. But they want to touch everything in the house to wipe it down, certify it clean.
Well, my understanding, and what you told me this morning, and I just want to make sure this is correct, that the contractor, in his quotation, wouldn't sign off on it would be mold free unless he cleaned.
He'll put a caveat in his proposal that if the town agreed to a limited, a more limited scope of work, then they wouldn't guarantee the results in terms of mold mitigation or score level production or whatever. Because it's sort of like having a scheme, having a large area of contamination and not completely eliminating it all, but just isolating a certain amount of it and like finding a few vials of smallpox vaccine in a cupboard somewhere, sort of like that.
Well, you could, you could almost bring in, if, you could almost bring, let's say that we paid to have it all taken care of and everyone signed off on it, someone could bring in an old wet umbrella and put it into the corner. Could that not start the whole process?
The other problem is, there's no baseline to compare what the damage was before, what it was. Every house has some levels of mold. Like I said, the real problem with luches, regardless of whether it's the lesser or the more, and how comfortable the tenant feels, is still beyond the town's insurance level of coverage. I think the first quote was twenty-three thousand or something.
With the contents?
The first, the lower number that you gave, the one that you would sign off.
About half as much as the total.
Yeah.
So the first one was thirty-four grand over?
No, like ten, twenty-three, you know, versus the fifteen.
Thirty-four, that's ZerPro.
It was thirty-three thousand dollars to dry it, ZerPro.
Which was... Twenty-six eight forty-four was the first estimate. Forty-six nine oh nine includes content cleaning.
It was twenty-seven.
Yeah, but the difference wasn't just content, right? It was also expanded the scope, there wasn't just content for the next year, twenty thousand.
And if he did it where he had the caveats, then how much was it?
Twenty-six thousand.
I got confused then.
I don't know.
No. Estimate one, twenty-six thousand eight forty-four, it only includes having vacuuming once and wiping instead of having a sandwich, which we always do, whatever a sandwich is. I don't know what happened with this one. Also, it did not include demoing materials on the third floor. Has protocol loss score and content cleaning or removal, according to the results, the worst effect that it results. Then they have the second score counts on the different, on the different floors. It looks like second floor is your worst floor. Then the third floor is a little less, and then the fourth floor is bad. So I guess the second floor got the dose, probably the highest dose of that. And the estimate two, he has forty-six thousand nine oh nine, includes content cleaning in the areas noted on the estimate. He has the rooms. He includes cleaning of areas noted on the estimate works, works the protocol recommendation with the exception of duct cleaning, which is not included. He says, I would use a four thousand dollar fee for, I mean, a four thousand dollar estimate for duct cleaning. You got to remember, this has ducts and spores have a way of like finding their way into ductwork. So you could clean this whole place, so first thing you had a rental property. Yeah, right, and the ductwork, it just reinfacts it.
And this is a, this is a, I don't know if it was an official quote from the, this individual. And my comment would be, we could do the scope of work and send it out for other quotes.
Sure. I don't know that this is a firm number, but this is, this is the...
And he may come down to our numbers, or if we send it out for quote, we might be able to find it where it meets within the amount of money that we have, correct?
I don't know. Fifteen thousand is the limit for our insurance. Whether you can have the entire building de-mold and all the contents and the vent landing system for fifteen thousand, that would be a stretch.
So you're asking, what are you kind of in concept bringing this to us for tonight?
First of all, the reason I even came here is so you know about it.
All right.
I mean, you know, because I didn't want to bring it up in a meeting about a proposal, then what's happening, what are you talking about? Okay, so now you have an idea. And Josh is here because as being part of the historic Elk Landing Foundation for fifteen years and probably most intimately familiar with that building, he probably has a pretty good understanding of what it looked like, of what its environment was prior to this happening. And I don't know if it's distinguishable now, except... if it's distinguishable now except in, in terms of score versus just history.
I mean, you know, when, when the, when the town acquired the property, the roof is leaking.
Well, I think we, listen, I, I can bring Mr. Gary Stork up here, he probably, he got quite a few black snakes down there over the years, but that basement was always flooded down there, wasn't it, over the years?
Uh, the basement is, is condition because you had a, a, the old lime garden in the bottom of that basement and it was always very damp in, in the basement, but at the same time, Josh can tell you the engineering went into the air conditioning, it was outrageous price that we, we paid for air conditioning and humidity and stuff like that, is that correct, Josh?
It, it was, it's a fairly complicated, commercial type museum quality system, you know, it has a lot of valves and a lot of.
We have actually an engineering company from Baltimore who done all that work, that's what the state said we had to do.
Yep, I re, I do remember, Mr. Wallen.
Yes.
Was involved and it was a high end, and I'm glad you mentioned that, that was one of the reasons why we had to go with that system, because it had to be museum quality because of the artifacts that we were bringing in.
It wouldn't have necessarily been my particular choice in, in design, but however, that's what we have and, and like I say, it, it, it was functioning, it did work, the fill valve for the boiler worked like a champ, you know, unfortunately, you know, so, so, so all the, all the devices that were supposed to be there were working except that it, it just, it just froze on that third floor on that one cold day.
Very good, so you're gonna, you just wanted to make us aware of this?
Yes, it, it would be, would be appropriate, because I don't have any proposals, you know, and, and funnily to say, what it actually will cost.
Everyone good?
Probably, if I'm, while, while I've got you here.
Yay, easy now.
In, in talking to you, you this morning, it dawned on me that I know when, when things first started with the landing, which we've been, you know, we're the town's only tourist attraction really in, in town.
Man, yeah.
Well, we, yeah, sure, but as far as historic thing, tour, tours, we don't have food unfortunately or liquor, but, you know, there's also been a lot, there's been a million dollars sunk into the landing over the years, you know, there's, there's been about five hundred thousand into the building in question and, and the other building was really in disrepair and, and has a roof that needs, when it's, it's not finished off inside, but the last phase of construction, it was approximately four hundred thousand, I think it was three hundred and seventy, I believe, have sunk into those buildings. And by and large, over the fifteen years on a relatively shoestring budget, we've been able to fund that and do those repairs and improve these structures, that coupled with tourism, you know, we've gone, you know, it, it's hard to spend the money on some of the advertising and things you want to when you've got roofs that leak into old buildings and, and that's really where the money's going over the years, and you've got two relatively sound buildings, unfortunately, we had this air conditioning issue on this building, which, which kind of stepped us back a little bit on the first floor that had been restored, but there's some really unique Elkton history and county history there, and what I realized was, I know in the first couple of years, I think the landing did some presentations to the town, I think there was a better understanding for the whole board as to what was going on down there and what events were happening, and I think over the years, there's been a couple of different presidents, I'm, I'm president now, I've been there for, I guess, about six years, there's been a couple change of guard there and, and, and by, by the way, when the lease agreement, everything was, was signed with the landing, it was the mayor and two members of his appointment serving on our board, so even though we haven't come to this board over the last few years, Mayor Fasota for the last twelve has served on our board, as has Gene Minner, and over that last twelve years, there's been a couple of people by Joe's appointment. When Rob was, was mayor, he had put Gene on to serve on our board and also several other members over, over his tenure. But I guess what I, what I, and it dawned on me this morning is, is we would really be open, just like the, like singular fire hall said, into working with the town, work with the alliance in some way to better make everybody on the same page, you know, open that diplomatic communication somehow and be happy to give you or anybody else that hadn't been down there a while, you know, a tour of the property and some of the history stuff. I brought a couple of our membership rush orders, if anybody had seen them or haven't seen them in a while, that has, touches on the history, talks about a few things. Unfortunately, with this particular problem, we, we don't have any events planned for, for two thousand fourteen. This happened right at the beginning, we were able to do, we, we just, we just did a, like a jamboree with some Cub Scouts down there on the outside of the property, we've had a couple other events where we've been able to utilize the outside of the property, but we really don't want to let anybody in there until we decide what's going on with mold. We've had our last meeting there, it actually seems fine, smells fine, but I don't want to leave the town any time liability because it is your property, it is your ground, and you're talking about a year lease, we have a ninety-nine year lease with ours.
You got a ninety-nine year lease with us. We were doing that soon.
Right, but so anyway, I'm, I'm here tonight, like while I'm already here, if you guys have any questions or any concerns or anything that you want to know about that or Raccoon Broker, or whatever the case may be, I'd be happy to answer anything.
No, I, I actually kind of want to, Michelle and I had spoke a little bit earlier the other day, one thing that we want to bring back is, is, is the mayor commissioners, thank you to our board members and have a little event, and I'd love to host that event at Elk Landing if, if at all possible, if the work gets all done by that period of time, I'd love for us to have our little.
I'd say six to eight weeks is probably the turnaround time for the repairs and the, and the drywall stuff as well.
So I, I'd love to have it down there.
Right.
There we go. I'd love to have it down there and see if we can pull that off. Listen, Elk Landing is near and dear to me and I will tell you that I'm happy to be back onto that board. It's, it's, there's a, there's a lot of history in, in Elk Landing and, and anything I can do and as an individual, at one time I had a little costume I wore down there and I, I gave that away or donated it.
It's still there.
It was a gentleman, I had a gentleman outfit, but it was, I really enjoyed the activities down there and I think it's something that we can really build on, and I, I'd like to see, and I mentioned to you this morning, I think that we can get them, that gate open, you've got security down there now, get that gate open, allow more and more people to get down there and do some walkthrough through the building.
And that's a, that's a, Rob, which maybe a lot of you aren't familiar with, you know, being good stewardess of the property, you know, over the course of, it is at a dead end road, we've had some issues over, over the years and we, it's been up for probably about three years now, we've had security cameras that, you know, the landing paid for and installed that are monitoring that outside, you know, the grounds and that actually has, you know, had some benefit over the years, you know, to, to candles and things like that. The gate is closed, but there is a sign on the gate that the town put up that says it is open to the public, there's a, you can walk in, you know, next to that, that road gate. I've got some concerns on how you maintain security there, you know, those properties with cars being over and driving.
I understand.
Open to, you know, working it out with the town.
One of the things that, I'm sure I may read and when I realize initially when the town purchased the property from the Youngs, I mean, nineteen ninety-nine somewhere in there, was forty-two acres, but subsequent to that, the town purchased twenty additionally, which was also leased, so that brought your, I think it's a total area occupied by the Historic Elk Landing there. It was purchased. It was a pretty significant property.
And, and we, and we purchased the property for three hundred and sixty-five thousand and we bought the second part for.
Actually, the program open space funds that we received for that property was about eight hundred thousand dollars.
So everything wasn't really paid out of taxpayers' dollars.
Only sixty.
Well, it was paid by the taxpayers' dollars, but it came through an open space, a grant. But one of the unique things when we, when we went through the contents, and commissioner, you may, may or may not be aware, but we found multiple letters.
Right.
And I think they were actually opened here and this may have been in this room, I think, when they were going through some of this stuff.
That's right.
And had the letter from Chakalas Jefferson, there were several from John Adams and one from Rob Alt.
Oh, yeah, I remember that one.
There was a lot of, a lot of layers there. So George, there was no George R. Arzig then.
Yes, right.
But if anyone would like to get a history lesson from me about, you know, the ego at Landon first in Elk Landing, I'll be more than happy, but Josh, thank you very much.
Also, I'm, I'm currently the Cecil and Hartford rep for Maryland Historic Trust, so in addition to the capacity as the president of the Elk Landing, as far as anything, you know, that, that the Maryland State Trust is concerned, I'm actually the official rep for the county, so if that, I mean, if I can be of assistance with that, I'd be happy to get you to the right people as far as the trust goes and answer any questions as far as that goes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Actually, we've got some department heads here, I know we're gonna wrap up the meeting, but if anyone has any questions for our department heads that are here, let's feel free to ask them some questions, if you have any, if you have any questions, concerns, anything, let's get something, get a sample, or you have something?
Well, there is one thing, Louis and Dan, there's a, there's a concern, Louis, I was gonna bring him to the meeting, that Independence Drive would like to have a survey as far as speed bumps, though, they seem to think that there are speed bumps all around that area, so people are avoiding that area and speeding where they are on Independence Drive. So if you look into that, that would help them.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm glad, Steve brought up something, I'm glad you brought this up to me, during the campaign, I talked about reducing, or attempting to reduce the water and sewer bills and I think it may be in our best interest to perform another water and sewer study. Our last one was done in two thousand.
Ten updated eleven.
Ten, and the, the reason for this is there has been some changes over the last three or four years, we lost Air Products, we lost the GORB property. I'd like for us maybe to meet with the group and throw some scenarios, you know, I, I'd love to try to annex all these enclaves in the town of Elkton. You know, we have the Holly Hall property, the Elkwood Estates property, we got Thompson Estates, which is all over the place per se, but if we make those moves and our water and sewer rates here and the out of town rate is here, it, it may dramatically affect our in-town rates where they go the other way, where these come down. So there's a large percentage of people that come down greatly that, that are currently out of town, but these are things that we need to put into the model. If you ask the model, A, if, if everyone in the town is on the same rate, what does the rate have to be? If we go by charge based on your, your, only what you use, what's that have to be? So I think, I think it's important for us to do that before I direct these guys who are here soon to say, hey, let's just cut the water and sewer bills down to this point, I think we have to take a little closer look at it. I know we can still do it, but I just wanted in concept, if this is something that we want to do, to consider that, it would, Steve would get some proposals for dollar amounts, how much that would cost for us.
Yeah, I want to take one minute, then we're gonna be done. I want to answer it after one minute.
Okay.
Now, study, hate spending money on something that we could probably, with this twenty, thirty thousand dollars for the study.
Twenty.
I'd rather put that into taking the twenty thousand dollars and cut the cost instead of wasting it on a study, but I'm just saying, I know everything.
That's a good thought.
About the study, if you're gonna spend twenty thousand, just give me twenty thousand now, just a question.
And that's a good comment.
Do you mean reduce the.
Yeah, we're talking about reduce. I mean, everything comes down to study, survey, or such and such before we even decide to do anything, and we spent twenty, thirty thousand dollars, we don't go to where.
Typically, Louis, and I, I, as far as twenty grand, the survey that I'm used to, the, the computer model is already there, so they already have a computer program or the model for the town, so I can't, I can't imagine that would still be the same cost because usually the cost is the build, the computer model.
Because, because they own it, that's what I need.
Yeah, for probably sharing the software and the program that you're.
We owned it, we wouldn't have to, just input that on.
But I just wanted to bring that up to the board, we're gonna talk about it on Wednesday, you can get some proposals and we'll see if that's what we want to do.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay? Or we may just take the twenty thousand and cut it off the water and sewer bill, that's what I have to. All right.